To our guests both in person and online. Just a reminder that this video is, or this meeting is being recorded by our partners at East Hampton Media. We are going to roll call in Ben Hershey.
Ben Hershey here.
Eric Geyet.
Here.
Megan Harvey.
Megan Harvey here.
Laura Scott present. Linda Markey.
Linda Markey here.
Sam Hunter.
Sam Hunter here.
Mia LaChapelle.
Here.
We are going to begin this evening with Secretary Harvey and our correspondence.
Yes. So we have a couple of pieces of correspondence to report. We have an email from Elise Langer with some questions and some follow-up action requested related to an incident at Mountain View last week. And we received an email from Claire Bullock Boyd letting us know that the parents who sent the letter, the letter from concerned parents that we mentioned last meeting, are checking in and hoping to see some specific responses. And we also received an email from Kira Henninger also about some of the incident, the incident that happened last week at Mountain View School. Okay, that's all I got for you.
Do we have any gifts?
I have no gifts to report.
You do.
I do.
You have.
I have some gifts to report.
You have myriad gifts to report.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation of items from Pioneer Valley Publishing Company. And we have a whole list.
It is a very long list that is public record if you are so interested.
And we're so very grateful.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
And I'll just add on that it's a list of things like dice and shapes and dry racers and reusable highlighting strips and stuff like that.
Lots of classroom supplies.
School supplies, yeah.
Awesome.
And additionally, make a motion to accept the list of donations to the 2024 We the People team. And we have five and a half pages of donations to report. We could not possibly read all of them unless you would like to have a very long meeting with me just listing names. They're incredibly generous donations from members of our community, friends, family. It's, we're all very proud of our We the People team. So it is reflected here and we are grateful for our gifts as well.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes? Thank you so much. We are going to move on to presentations and speak as the devil. We have the We the People students and their illustrious teacher here this evening to share with us their experiences this past school year. So we welcome you to the podium. We'd love to hear from you.
Hi, thank you for having us here. I just think that We the People itself, it's like, it was so important for us to have that ability. Because at least for me, I went in not knowing anything about government, not knowing anything about how even local level government and even like a school committee meeting would work. I didn't know anything about how federal government worked and I wasn't really interested in it that much either. But having the opportunity to take the class because I thought it would look good for college, I actually like fell in love with it and learned so much from it and not even just learned about government, but I learned about how to be a better learner and how to learn things in a way where I can talk about it and share it with other people rather than just learning it for a test like I've done in every other class my whole life. And it just felt so amazing and having that sense of accomplishment and having that sense of knowing that like I know something that's important and that will help me in the future. It was just an amazing opportunity to have, to be there at Nationals and to be able to feel confident about what I know when I answer a question that a judge asks me. And I'm just incredibly grateful to have had that opportunity.
Amazing.
Awesome.
We should mention for the public that this team won the state championship and placed first, which sent them to the national championship where they placed 10th nationally. Yes, keep going.
Good evening, I'm Sophie Sacheke and I agree with everything Addie said. And I think like one thing that I feel like was personal to me, I like dabbled in going to a Northampton High School or going to an East Hampton High School. And I think like among many things, We the People was one of the things where I'm like, I would have never gotten anything like this in any other school. And I'm like so eternally grateful for it. I think along with Addie, I wasn't, I was never like interested in government, but like I didn't know the extent that I think it would have gone. We were both in the same unit, like the institutions unit. I think like at first I was like, oh God, this is so many like specifics, it's kind of boring. And now I'm like, it's so fascinating to me and I think it's like educated me and now I'm going to become a better voter and now like educate other people and really know how the system works to like create change. And like we have our three, like work hard, think deeply, and then what's the last one?
Prepare.
Prepare. Prepare for the future. So I think we can all attest that we've like learned how to do that and it's super special. So, and I would like to thank our lovely teacher, Ms. Brown, and also Ms. Daddman, who's not here, but yeah, thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Devin O'Brien. Kind of unlike my colleagues, I, since I was 12 years old, have known I wanted to do We the People. I remember in seventh grade watching the national hearings in 2020 in my bedroom. And I just, I fell in love with the program. And then being able to come in and do it was such a vital aspect of my high school career. And I think that a lot of the things that I've learned in this class will really carry me throughout my adult life. And like I never thought I would be so passionate about getting a national civics bill passed, but now like I've researched into, you know, reaching out to legislators and trying to get that, you know, moving and all that stuff. So I think among that, this class really shows education, but also community. Cause you have all of these people around you who are equally as passionate, which can be really hard to find in, you know, your average teenager. And I think that, you know, that support is just really what got me through this class and what got me is getting me through high school. So I want to piggyback off of Sophie and just say thank you to every teacher that supported us, you know, Ms. Daddman, Ms. Brown, and Mr. Orin, who all came in. And every one of y'all who have come in and judged, it's just, it was so great. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, my name is Caitlin. I'm a mentor, which means I get a different color shirt from everyone else. And it also means that last year when I did the program, it ended and I said, oh my God, I gotta do that again. That was so much fun. So basically what we do as mentors and do is here as a mentor as well. Basically, we come back and our main job is to just help teach the new kids everything that we learned last year because Ms. Brown can't be in six places at once, even though we wish she could be. So that's, we're just basically extending our knowledge to the up and comers. And then there gets to be a point in the year where like you realize they're teaching me now. So it's just, it's really great to be able to come back to a program that we all really love so much and we learn so much from, and then to be able to take even more from it. And just, you know, as a 12th grader who's leaving school in 10 days, oh my God. Like when I entered We the People, I was like, it seems interesting, like I don't know what'll come out of it. Like if you would ask me in 11th grade what I wanted to do with my life, I probably would have said, I'll get an English degree and figure it out. But now I'm going to college and I'm leaving with a master's in public policy in four years. So I know a lot of my fellow mentors are also like going down the political science pre-law tracks now because of this. So I think it's just a really important class that I'm really grateful we've had the experience. I've had the experience to be in for two years. I know a lot of the, the competing students are coming back as mentors, so they'll be able to do it again. And it's just, it's a really important class that it's, we're really lucky to have been able to have. Because, you know, we took civics in eighth grade, but this goes so much deeper and it's just formed like an incredible base of civic knowledge for all of us. So I'm just really glad that East Hampton has this class and that we're all here in front of you tonight. So yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
So I'll just take a minute, especially for folks who may be watching at home, to explain a little bit about how the program works. And if you haven't had a chance to see this, so my name is Kelly Brown and I am the teacher of the We the People course at East Hampton High School. And now we also have Taylor Daddman who's helping us, which is amazing. She also is a teacher now at the high school and she was one of my students in We the People and the first team that actually won the state competition and was able to come to DC with us in 2012. And so this program influenced her so much that she has come back and actually joined our staff, which is phenomenal and we're very lucky to have her. But for folks who are watching at home, the program is a congressional hearing style assessment model where students have the opportunity to develop some level of expertise in certain aspects of the Constitution. So we go through a course where they learn Constitution from philosophy to modern application. And then at the end of each unit, they have the opportunity to testify about the things that they've learned in that unit by preparing a short statement with a small team and then answering questions. And some of you have been a part of that and many of you at home have been a part of that and come in as guests, judges, and had the opportunity to hear the students, to engage in an authentic conversation. And I think what makes the program so special is it is authentic. Students are learning about something, they're having to talk about it from a place of knowledge. They have to answer questions that they don't know what they're going to be asked. And that is the, the model that we use throughout the entire semester. And so students prepare during the first semester to compete in the Massachusetts State Competition. And it is exciting to say that we've won that for the last seven years straight with different students every time. And so it's really amazing, I think, that we have such an incredibly strong program. And I think what really feeds our program is exactly what Caitlin was talking about, is that each year students come back and they bring their, their learning and what they've learned about the Constitution and they want to share that with other students. And so we have 10, 15, you know, mini teachers that are teaching the material to students. And it's really incredibly special. And I know that it's impactful, not just because students move on and go into these careers, but students come back three, four, six years later and can just engage with students about this material because they learned it. They didn't just memorize it, they actually learned it and internalized it and came to understand it and came to be really passionate about it. And so we had the amazing opportunity again to go to Washington DC in April. And these students competed on Saturday and Sunday, so April 13th and April 14th. And they had the opportunity to testify against 47 other schools from all across the country. And in those two days, they performed so well that they actually made it to the top 10 rounds. And so they're competing against public and private schools from all across the country. And I believe in the top 10, the size that was closest to us was a, was a school of 1,600. But many of the schools are thousands of students. And so our small high school, public high school, was able to compete at an incredibly high elite level. And if folks would like to see those videos of the students competing, they are available on our website, which people can access through our Facebook page, our We the People Facebook page. If people don't know that we have that, we do have that. And if they want to see what it actually looks like. But they were absolutely phenomenal. They competed on that final day. We had a chance to compete in downtown Washington DC. And I could not have been prouder of the work that they did. It was, it was stunning. And I think the, the thing that I like to share with folks is it wasn't stunning because they knew so much, everybody knew so much. But what was stunning is, is that they were in control of the space in the room. And anybody who's ever been an athlete knows the difference between being in a game where the game controls you and you control the game. And those, that two hours that we sat in downtown Washington DC, they laid everything out on the table. And I, I could not have been prouder at that moment of the work that they did and how confident and poised and just excited they were about all of the energy and effort that they had put in. And something that's incredibly special about this program is that I asked these students to give so much with absolutely no guarantee of any result. And year after year, they do it. And you put your heart and your soul and, and everything. I mean, we worked tirelessly on this, hours and hours and hours, meeting after school, meeting evenings, to really make this happen. And I'm just forever grateful that I get to learn alongside them because every year it's brand new questions and brand new material. And so for me as a teacher, it's a dream because I get to learn right alongside them about new things and come back every single year. And so really this team, we did have the opportunity in 2020 to win the competition when it was during COVID and there was one question. But this is the best that we've ever performed in the traditional full three question competition. And that's because of the hard work of the students, it's because of the hard work of the mentors and just the incredible dedication. And then never to be forgotten, one of the best things about this program is the incredible support we get from the community. It is unbelievable how much this community cares about this program and how many people I hear from. With donations, sometimes with just good luck cards, people I see downtown. Everybody in East Hampton loves this program and, and we know it and we feel it. And we're just so incredibly grateful for the fact that every year these students are funded to go from, you know, five, I think that was only half on top of that, right? So it's about 10 pages of donations, hundreds of people donating to us in order for us to do that. And I want everybody in the community to know that I can say for sure that students take that very seriously. And they know that if their community is going to pay for them to go to DC, that they are going to represent this community and this state the absolute best that they can. And so I just want to say that I'm incredibly grateful to my students. Not all of them could be here because they have jobs and they play sports and they're, they're in many, many places. But for, you know, a few months, they really put their heart and soul into something and it was incredibly impressive. And I'm just very grateful to the community, to the students, to everyone for this incredible program. And I encourage folks to watch the videos. It's, it's impressive, the work that they're able to do and the knowledge that they develop throughout this program. And so thank you for giving us the opportunity to share just like a small nugget of that. And I think for me, giving students some faith in their institutions at this moment is incredibly important. And for me, it's not just about building smart students, it's about building good people. And so I think they know that in the end, that's really what I'm about, is that I want them to leave. And everywhere we travel, they are good people. They're kind, they take care of other students, they meet other students, they're respectful. And we, we have a lot of just scrappiness to us. So it's a lot of fun. So thank you for having us here this evening and, you know, we're just happy to represent this community and very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, really, this is, I've already cried twice tonight, so we're doing great. I want to say that we've, all of us have been longtime supporters, I've been a longtime supporter of the program. This was the first year I got to witness firsthand their performance at the state competition. It was the apex of what public education can produce. It was the most incredible thing I've ever witnessed. It wasn't just the knowledge and their comfort, their poise, their confidence, their support of one another, this seamless collaboration with fellow students. I, I once taught social studies to a similar age group. I've never seen anything like it. It may sound a little boring to go in and look, I promise you, it is not a waste of your time. Find those videos and watch this, it is incredible. And what a moment to really be instilling. I'm, I'm so heartened to hear that there are kids doing pre-law and teaching, but also there were some students who had talked about, you know, I'm going to study sports medicine, but I'm also this incredibly engaged and informed citizen and voter, equally important. Just, I can't say enough, incredible job to the students and the faculty and to Ms. Brown, just so incredibly special, we're so grateful. Anybody else? Yes.
Oh yes. I just want to say that I was able to be, you know, part of the judging, got to know your names and was re, I was so impressed by your thinking. The questions that came, came to you and then you had to answer it and connect it to laws and evidence and Socrates and Plato. I mean, you really had to think about a massive amount of information and focus it on what the question was asking you and connect it to today's issues. I mean, it was amazing to, you know, I saw the difference from the first time that I went to judge until, until, until the end. And it, it was just amazing to me to think the commitment, number one, all the hours and the time that you, that you showed up and worked together. And you did that knowing that you were working together as a group. And for me, when I saw that video that your teacher sent, when they were going through the list of number one, number two, and they got to number nine, and they paused and then they said Massachusetts. And that is a video that everybody should see because that's a culmination of how proud you were of yourself and how that hard work really worked out for you. So I just want to say I think it's a wonderful program. I think forever you'll remember it. I used to be high school principal and one of the things that I really wanted in a teacher was for, you know, even decades later, to present students with one experience that they will remember for the rest of their life. And I have to say, this is one of those experiences that all of you remember. And I want to make sure to really thank your teacher because, and your mentors, because it certainly was a group effort. And everybody is extremely proud of you and I'm so glad you presented tonight. Thank you.
Big feelings, big feelings at the table. Thank you, you guys are incredible, really an inspiration.
Can I just, so I taught, I taught social studies in fifth grade for years and they weren't as excited about it. But I think that what your teacher talked about with your poise and handling the high stress situations and someone had mentioned about studying for tests and then passing and then moving on, really, your accomplishments are phenomenal. So congratulations. But the fact that you went through a process where you had to deal with a difficult situation, high stress, I imagine, in Washington DC, all these huge schools, pressure, the pressure of you guys, your reputation is very, very large. I mean, it's back, every time we hear it, I feel like I just expect to hear every year, oh, they won again. Well, they won again. But that's not really a fair expectation. It's something that you work hard for every, every day. But I think the biggest part with what your teacher mentioned is, once you leave school, that's all of life. All of life is just, here's a problem, here's a high stress situation. And the fact that you have been in that arena and been in that situation already at this age is huge. Whether it's going to college or getting a job or helping your family with something, you have that, that skill and that tool in your pocket now of, oh, I, I did that already. So I can deal with this, okay. My brother needs this, I need to get here. Driving people places, all the things that you're going to do in your futures, that's all life is, is just problem solving and just dealing with situations that stress you out. So kudos to you. I see, I have a fifth grade daughter, so I look at you, I'm like, maybe someday, my son. Like it's wild. So I'm not trying to make people cry, but you are incredible. You are putting East Hampton on the map in a lot of positive ways, but just know that that tool that you have now, that's what you're going to use for the whole rest of your lives. So congratulations on having that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think, as a, my son is in fifth grade too, public school. And, you know, I'm, I'm in this position and I teach at HCC, which is a public school. And I am constantly thinking about public education. And when you said this is the apex of what it can produce, this, that is factual, like what you are talking about and what you've done for years and years. This is like pinnacle of what it should be, not only here, but everywhere. And so I feel so like unbelievably excited that my child is coming in your direction. And like I just love that this is happening here. But there's a few things too that just popped out from the things that were just talked about. One of them, like Kelly Brown, you said, students were in control of the space in the room, which to me is, should be like, that should be over every door in every classroom on earth. Like a student needs to be able to take control of the space and not just be told what to do constantly. And they get to take control of their learning. And I see what, from HCC perspective, I teach like, you know, freshman English. And I see a lot of people come in and they've just been kind of brainwashed a lot. They don't have that critical thinking faculty, they don't have the ability to be autonomous, to think for themselves, to ask, you know, important questions. And it's so exciting and thrilling that you guys have this skill set that you can now take with you going into college. Like you realize that education is something that you, you do, that it's not done to you. And that's going to be an amazing thing. And I was just curious, and I don't know if this is even a question that can be answered, but there was a couple of people who'd spoken. You talked about how at first it wasn't, they were like, no, this is not going to work. And then it clicked in. And I was just wondering if there was a moment or like something that, was there a point where you were like, oh, this is it? Yeah.
At states, like I remember it clicked and then you get the new questions and then you go kind of, like you have that round, the second round of questions. Cause you have that basis of, okay, this is what a hearing is supposed to look like going into Nationals. You're like, how do I make this better? So kind of like, you kind of can fall back into that like, oh, um, I need to get better. I really, the biggest moment that stands out to me, it's not the first time it clicked, but the biggest moment that I remember standing out was I was in my first Nationals hearing and I was terrified. And I was praying to God to not get one of the questions, because I was good on all of them, but like I was like, if I get that one, I know I'm going to be nervous. And we didn't, and I just remember the first time after our statement, I got a word right that I was messing up on. And I, it just like clicked and I was like, I got this, I'm good, I'm set. And then they asked a question and I like, I couldn't, I, it wasn't a question that I had been asked before. It was a question that I could loop and answer that I had formulated already into. And once that happened, I was like, I'm good. And I kind of rode off of that for the rest of the hearings. So that was my moment at least.
Thank you.
I feel like there's a few moments for me, I think like for one, being able to talk about this information like outside of the class and like hear what things that my parents are talking about at the dinner table or that like, I don't know, random like person in another class is talking about. I'm like, I actually know a lot about this. And then I think also like kind of on the community aspect side, like it clicked a lot, like we're such like a different, like different people are in this group. And I think like there are people that I never thought I would have talked to or like bonded with. And I think like that was a moment where I kind of clicked like this group that I'm going to like feel comfortable with for like the rest of my high school experience. And like, these are people that like I might not have anything in common with, but I feel like this is like supporting like community that I'm going to have for the rest of my high school experience. And that for me kind of clicked to be like the important factor of like, even if we all do bad, even like I've slipped up so many times, like, I don't know, everyone's slipped up. But it's like, I think that's the other thing, like the judges want to hear like what you have to say, like even if you don't think it's like this amazing, like well drawn out like idea. You're a younger individual who like interested in civic education, interested in these things that like are maybe like obscure, like for younger kids to be interested in. And like that within itself is like really impressive to older people and to people who like pass their job. So I think there will be a few of those that click, isn't it?
And just to, I have a couple moments similar to Sophie where it was just like, we start with our questions that we've never heard anything about. I mean, me and Sophie, we are in an institutions unit where we talk about different institutions and we had to learn about initiative referendum and recall. And I barely knew what those were when we started. So it starts with like, how do we even begin to talk about these things? Like Ms. Brown gives us so many things to read, so many things to look at, to learn about. But putting it all together, it's stressful. It's like, I don't fully understand this yet, I have to answer a question, but I have, like, I don't know what I'm saying. And then it comes to like memorizing things to say, so you sound professional. But then for me, it's those moments right before the competition when we're on our two hour, six hour bus rides to get to our competition where we're practicing. And we're finally getting to the point where it's not just practicing our memorized answers to questions anymore. It's moving on to questions that we haven't looked at and we didn't like write out answers for. It's the questions our mentors are asking us off the top of their head and us just being able to have a conversation. We've talked about after Nationals, about the thing that we think is what allowed us to perform so well and so differently from what other classes has done, was that we make it so conversational because we want to be talking about it, because we feel so engaged in what we've learned, that we want to talk about it. And we're not just saying things we memorize, we're saying things we understand and we're manipulating what we've learned to form a cohesive response that makes sense to us. And it's those moments when Ms. Brown explained something to me the morning of a competition that I was like, wait, now I could answer any question you asked me about this, because no matter how hard those judges pushed on us that last day, I understood what I was saying. us that last day, I understood what I was saying to them. And I understood why it was hard to answer their questions because of how complicated our government is. And it was those moments that really made me think, like, we went from nothing, nothing to everything.
Amazing.
Yep. In the back, we see you.
Yeah. Um, for me, and I think for a couple other people I know, it really first clicked when we get assigned to the unit that you're gonna be in for the rest of the year, because at the beginning, we're floating around with a bunch of different people and a bunch of different topics. There's constantly new information of so many different things being thrown at you. And then once you're finally able to settle in with the two or three people you're gonna be with for the next rest of the school year, and you know, like, okay, this is what I'm gonna be learning about, and you really start to, like, take it in and get passionate about it, is when you see so many people, like, start to, like, get really excited about it. And when you start seeing these, like, crazy arguments and ideas you've never heard before.
Just the last thing, I just wanted to, super fast.
Well, you'll have to find it out.
Thank you so much. And like, you're just reminding me of, like, that sort of important life lesson that I've just sort of begun to understand myself, which is sometimes the journey is more important than the destination. And like, what you're describing about this adventure that you went on, like, this, that is more important than, victory is amazing, but like, what you did together.
I, I just want to say that some of you I do know personally, and I'm very pleased that I do. Um, when, you are reiterating for me the reason that I decided to run for school committee, because as I was thinking about that, I thought, what do I want our students in East Hampton to come out with? And I want them to come out with the ability to critically think. I want them to have the ability to communicate clearly. And I want them to have a connection to our community or to community. And this organization, this group, this class, really simplifies every one of those things. And I am just extremely proud to be in this community with you.
Sam?
And I'll, I, I will keep it short, which is unusual for me. I, um, I, I did not realize, like, what a, I mean, I knew that this was like, kind of a dynasty in our town, to be honest. This is like, one of the things that this district and this high school is really well known for. Um, when, when you all were in DC, I was following along, um, on the internet. And, uh, I was reading the names of the schools that you were competing against out loud. And I realized that East Hampton High was the only one that had the name of the town as the high school, because it's such a small community, we're the only high school in this town. And that's huge, like, that you were really go, it was really obvious that you were going up against, like, schools that had much larger student bodies and a lot more resources and a lot more, um, it just, just kind of, just a lot more numbers. And so I thought that, I was like, wow, we really are, like, the best. This is really cool, you know? Um, this is obviously an identity forming experience for a lot of you. And I, um, and, and if it's not, it's okay, you'll have another one. That's a really important part of, of high school, or of just of young adulthood in general. And I really hope that, um, you know, that follows, that follows with you, and you kind of remember you can do the hard things, because you did the hard things, and, um, and here you are. And, um, uh, the other thing too is, uh, one of the things that Ms. Brown said that I really liked was that, you know, it was, it, it feels really good to be able to help young people find confidence in our civic institutions at a time when, you know, confidence in civic institutions are, are really low. And, um, you all really helped me find confidence in the future of our civic institutions as well, which is a big deal, because I'm not a very optimistic person in general. So, thank you very much. It's been, um, very nice to hear from you all and, like, have this bright spot in the middle of, um, a lot of, a lot of challenges, you know?
Mia?
I actually, um, congratulations, of, of course. And, um, I, I wanna, one, I guess, make a, a point of clarity. Um, the material is, the amazing thing, the material is all always the same from the Constitution, but the facts or what you have to address is so current. I, like, glad, it was, like, what was on, you know, the front page of the newspaper two weeks ago was a part of the, the questions. And I want to make that clear for, for the public, that this is not just memorization and putting it in the right order. And two, Congressman Neal came to the class, and I, I, I think Ms. Brown was talking about, there were some questions, you guys were gonna try to stump him, or, or, and I'm just wondering, were you able to, to stump?
We had a wonderful conversation. He asked some great questions, and he also, uh, the exciting thing about this program is we invite all these folks in, uh, from local to state to, to our national government. And students have an opportunity to not just ask them questions for fun, but they're actually utilizing the material. And so, you know, that week, we had a chance to meet with Representative Neal, we had the opportunity to meet with Justice Breyer. And so, students at the competition were saying things like, well, last Thursday, we had the opportunity to sit down with Supreme Court Justice Stephen Breyer and our representative in, you know, in Congress. So it just, um, it, it was really just a wonderful opportunity for us to learn firsthand about the work and then to be able to talk about it. So that's my diplomatic answer to that.
He was, uh, he was blown away by the, the scope and the knowledge he knew about the program, but just really blown away on how you applied the material.
Our esteemed Congressman Neal aside, I'm sure there's a number of electeds that you could stump and/or shame in the current guise.
Yes, I would tell you, but really quick, there's nothing else I could say, aside from what my colleagues have said here. You guys are incredibly impressive. It's a privilege to be a part of the community with this group. Um, the thing that I'm, I, I do have a reputation, I think, for a little bit of a tears, but the thing that you all said that really got me is the, um, connection piece of it, and the importance of the, you know, people who you maybe normally wouldn't have known and connected with. Um, I think that might be all that really matters, like, in the whole scheme of life. And it's just really amazing. And the thing I really wanted to add on to it is, Ms. Brown, I mean, this is, this dynasty is because you are here and you do this. Um, that's incredibly impressive. Perfect for you.
Stop crying. We could talk about this all day. We love you all. We're so grateful. We're so proud. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules, for sharing your thoughts with us. We're really, really grateful. Yes. Um, so, we are gonna move on to, um, very quickly, we have, um, a presentation scheduled from Safe Passage. I'm gonna quickly slide in our student representatives, um, so that they, um, can move on to other things, that they have other things this evening. So I see that, um, Piper Burrell is in the audience. Do you want to start first, Piper? Great. How do you feel about we the people, Piper? Do you want to make some connections?
I don't know how I'm supposed to top that. To say, you coming and doing this is incredibly impressive, and we are incredibly grateful that we have students who want to do this. Truly.
Round of applause for Piper. All right, get it, Piper.
Um, so, in science, we're doing astronomy and MCAS review, because we have that Thursday and Friday. In math, we're doing MCAS, because we have that, but we had that today and then tomorrow. In civics, we're doing the legislative branch and CAP, and I will get to that later. And then in ELA, we're doing our final essay on the Holocaust. In art, we're doing papier mache masks. In music, we're doing guitars. Gym, we did the Pacer test, which I hated it. In STEAM, we're making tiny houses. And in health, we're, uh, creating anti-smoking and vaping posters. And then CAP is the eighth grade civics action project, where we work in groups of two to four to find a problem in our community, and we, like, research it and find ways to fix it or solve it. And we can get feedback from other students about their opinions. That's like, basically it.
This is gonna be a public presentation, correct?
Um, I think it's around our school library for the other, like, for the younger grades. I don't know.
It's really impressive work by the eighth graders. We look forward to seeing it.
And then, we had math MCAS today, and then tomorrow.
Endolences.
Science, yeah. And then, a couple weeks ago, we had a group of actors come in to present A Midsummer Night's Dream by Shakespeare. It was really fun. And they interacted with the kids, they came up and gave high fives. But when I wanted one, the, uh, actor psyched me out of it, in front of, like, the whole school. So then everyone was laughing.
The story moving forward, Piper, is you were in on that joke.
Yeah. Oh, and then there's 25 more school days left until we're out.
Tick, tick. Thank you, Piper.
Thank you.
Do we have Mackenzie with us first?
Oh, that's, that's a question for me. No.
Okay, so Mackenzie's not with us this evening, probably because senior year, et cetera, et cetera. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to hear from her one more time before she puts us on her rearview. Um, but we are then gonna move on to a presentation, um, on Safe Passage.
I want to share slides.
You have them?
Okay. Hi.
Hello. And I believe, let us know if this looks right. Megan is...
I am going to share. We have, we have slides.
Share.
Well, while they figure that out, um, my name is Alyssa Bossinger. I am the Prevention and Outreach Manager at Safe Passage. Um, and we run the Say Something Youth Initiative at East Hampton High School. We do a, um, violence prevention program that all ninth and 10th graders go through as part of, um, we come into classes and deliver this content, um, trying to encourage people and help them build the skills to have healthy relationships. Deanna here is, is one of our facilitators, and she's gonna talk a little bit about our summer leadership academy.
Yeah. Hi, um, like Alyssa said, my name is Deanna. I am the Youth Prevention and Outreach Specialist at Safe Passage. Um, and I am one of our two facilitators. Our other is Meryl, who cannot be here today. They are from Community Action Youth Programs. And, uh, we do the Say Something Labs in East Hampton High School for the classes. And as well, we are here to talk about our Summer Youth Academy. So this is our summer program. It is a three-week program, one week for, uh, peer leaders and two weeks for the other students participating. So the purpose of this program is to, first of all, give students opportunities to connect with each other. It is not East Hampton High School exclusive, although we give priority to East Hampton students. And our whole thing is that during the year, we talk about healthy relationship skills and how to build those healthy relationships. This is giving us more of time to explore things that students don't get in those couple hours in our lab programs. So in those, uh, week, we do, uh, social emotional skill building based on what we get as feedback of what students want to hear. And so it's really what students want. We have different programs every single year. We try to be as student-run as possible. So these workshops and skill buildings are based on what is best for them. And also...
You want me to advance?
Sorry, what?
Let me know if you want me to advance. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. And, um, also, it's a really great way to build a resume. Nothing looks better on a college resume, or even a job resume, than, I went to a conference essentially for two weeks and got paid to do it. It's awesome. So, yeah, if you want to go to the next slide?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, okay. So, sorry, I forgot which order these are in. So, the details are, they are, um, it is in, uh, E- East Hampton High School, July 15th through the 19th and the 22nd through the 15th, so the Monday through Thursday, is the two weeks with all 10 Leadership Academy members. And then the week before, we have extra training with our two peer leaders, who we select based on who has done our older programming or interest. It is also open to incoming ninth graders. So we are also doing outreach in the, um, the lower school, if there's any interested eighth graders. Uh, like I said, preference is for EHS students, but we also invite Northampton students, Holyoke students, because we want to get a large array of youth. And it's always awesome seeing, uh, kids come in and be like, we're best friends, but we just met this week, and they go to a different school. So it's awesome. If you could go to the next slide, please. So peer leaders are two students that we select. These are folks who usually go through our programming, whether it be lab or our advisory group, which is our group that advises all our programming in EHS. And they get extra, um, training through Safe Passage and Community Action, um, staff. We do things like Domestic Violence 101, Teen Dating Violence 101, how to be a good peer leader, because it can be really uncomfortable going through all of these workshops and only having adults be there for you. So we like to have other students there who can navigate and be there in a way that we just can't as adults. Um, and they do get paid for their extra time. So peer leaders make $300 for the three weeks rather than the 200. Next slide, please. So our daily schedule incorporates a, uh, daily team building activity. So we think it's really important to build community. Change can only happen through community, is our core belief. So we want to make sure that we build relationships while we're learning. So those things can be anything goofy, from doing hot takes, to, uh, an art project, to just getting outside, because it's summer. It's just things that we have fun while being able to create this community. And at the end of the week, we do a presentation in open mic. We let the students choose what project they would like to do, whether it be a, uh, we did a poster campaign before on something that they enjoy. Um, students created, um, little magazines on things that they were passionate about. Anything that they feel is important based off the workshops, um, generally having to do with activism or interpersonal relationship skills. Next slide, please. So this is our general, um, schedule. So you'll see that students will arrive at 11:00 AM. We do welcome check-ins, all those good things. And then we do our team building. We have a quick lunch break. We do, uh, Leadership Academy 101 on the first day, just letting them know what's gonna happen. But usually, they'll work on their projects. We have a break, and then we have our workshops. So the workshops are different every single year, but some of the ones that we have done in the past year has been relationship mapping, talking about the different relationships we have, how they interact with one, one another. We had our LGBTQ plus advocate, um, come in from Safe Passage and do something on being a good ally in your community. We also had one where it was about fat phobia in the community, uh, by our children's advocate at Safe Passage. So these are all either Safe Passage, uh, professionals or people working in the community with Community Action Youth Programs. And they do great, great workshops. These are workshops we do all around the, the community in general, but we just cater them to the EHS students, based on what we know about EHS culture throughout the school year. And then we do a debrief and goodbye. We make sure that everyone's feeling emotionally and physically safe after everything we talk about, and we just prepare for our next day. And next slide. Same thing with week two, but at the end of the week, we do a, um, open mic where we invite parents, teachers, see what we're working on, and just be able to do a presentation of whatever they would like to do. All right. Okay, students stipend. So you might be asking, why students stipends? Uh, because we believe that youth time is important. They are giving us their time, their energy. Wanting them to give a reason to be there, other than just having fun, is, money is a good way to spend your time. We think that most ways to get adults to do things is to pay them for their time and effort, and youth is no exception. So we do $100 per week, and the peer leaders get that extra $100, which is awesome. And then, okay, how to sign up. So students can sign up on our website at saysomething.org/youth. We have a bunch of posters around EHS. Um, or in our diversity center, room 104, there's a bunch of things up there, too. Uh, we're very excited to have the applications open. Um, and then we reach out in the next few weeks, and we choose our folks based on the application and the peer leaders based on, uh, their experience in either our programs or general activism peer leader programs. And, does anyone have any questions for me about the program or our program in general? I think this is one of our first times that Safe Passage has been to the school committee. So if you have any questions about Say Something in general, be happy to answer them.
I'm curious if they have selected the workshops for this year yet. You said they kind of base it, they tailor it off the kind of current school climate?
Yes. So right now, we have all of our applications. We sent an interest form to all our partners, uh, with Community Action and Safe Passage. And they're working with our youth, um, development specialists from Community Action to create those workshops. We have a few of them already picked out, but we're still in the works of fully making sure our facilitators are ready. Uh, because someone could be a great counselor advocate, but when it comes to facilitating, that's a little different. So we're making sure everyone's prepared. Um, we will have a full list, I think, by next week is gonna be our, our final, like, this is who we're choosing.
And when should we tell people these are due? Like, when would you want to have kids be responding? When, what's the kind of deadline?
So we take applications up to the day of, uh, because things happen. Sometimes, um, rides fall through, sometimes kids go on vacation last minute. So we just accept them as they come, and we kind of do it on a basis of, if someone can only be there one week, that's fine. And, yeah, so up until the day, we'll accept applications.
Anyone else have questions?
You said ninth, ninth and 10th grade? Or you said you talked to the eighth, how do the eighth graders find out? Is it like a form that goes out? Do you, do you actually go in and do a presentation for the eighth graders, or?
Yeah, so it's all current and... Yeah, so it's all current and incoming high schoolers. So our diversity liaison, Daniel Tate, used to work at the lower school, so I've reached out to him for who would be the best point of contact. We have just sent out our mass emails to all the surrounding schools and the middle school to see when we can come in. I also emailed them some information, so I'm still waiting on some replying back on the lower school about outreach material. But we have plenty of it, if you want us to put it anywhere.
I just wanted to say, as someone who's granddaughter took part of the program a couple of years ago, that it's an excellent program. Again, we're very proud that this is something that's offered for students. It was kind of a changer for her in terms of the same way We The People, you know, that same type of coming in, learning a lot of skill sets, and feeling confident about being able to be in a program like this. So it's an excellent program.
Yes, I know we sang a lot of praise to We The People, but I'll sing praise to any students I have come in contact who have been in We The People, just the way they take on these social problems, too. I can see the way they build it in their mind. They're unprompted sometimes. They'll be like, "Did you know that this was happening in the government in terms of what we're talking about?" And I was like, "I did not. Please tell me more." So yeah, I agree. It's critical thinking skills are connected when it comes to building a community.
Anybody? Yeah, of course.
I just want to say that in the other part of it besides the Leadership Academy is that you are teaching in the health classes, which is really great and is a good collaboration between Safe Passage and the high school. But also, you visit the Diversity Center and establish relationships with kids. So I had the, you know, very fortunate experience of being that Diversity Center liaison for a couple of months this year. I loved every second of it, going in there, being, talking to the kids. So I still go back there and visit because the relationship you establish with kids, you want to make sure you continue over time, right? Once you establish that trust and relationship, and you have come in, too, and speak to the kids and made a difference, not just coming for to teach a class or just the summer. This encompasses establishing a long-term relationship with kids in many different capacities at the school. So I think it's a great program, and I'm looking forward. Actually, we had a meeting, Alyssa, today about the MOU and the leadership program. So I think it's a great program to have come from outside in with the Worcester Community Action, also, I mean, not Worcester. I have Worcester Community Action and Worcester with that, and that's why I remember the Community Action. But the Community Action part of it is another component that works really closely with you also to make a difference for kids.
Yes, definitely. I come with the prevention, the violence prevention aspects of our programming, and then Community Action is great when it comes to local resources. We've had students come with us being like, "I have this issue, where do I go?" And Community Action has been a great partner in that. But also, building relationship skills, building healthy relationships, not even just romantic, but platonic relationships is so important, and the way that students have just embraced us has been really great.
I'm sneaking up behind Deanna also to like, one of the, one of the primary goals of our program is to, we know that having even just one trusted adult in a student's life leads to better outcomes on like, mental health in terms of their scholarship, just all around. And so our facilitators, particularly Mero and Deanna, who have so much contact with the students, I think, and I think Devin is left, Devin could speak to this, because Devin's been through a bunch of our programming. I think they're able to really be that for students, just another opportunity to have somebody in the building who's not a teacher, who doesn't sort of have that same power dynamic going on. And I think it really facilitates those sort of trusted adult relationships, which is one of our goals of our program as a whole. And the summer program, I think, is particularly conducive to that.
Particularly post-COVID, particularly if you doesn't produce kids.
Yes. Very much so.
Anybody else?
I just have one thing to say. I think one of the things that I appreciated about hearing this presentation and then also kind of having it on the same night as the previous presentation is that this has been a very student-centered meeting for us, which, now that I'm reflecting on it, it's not always, doesn't always feel that way. So one of the things that you were saying was that the program is kind of tailored based on what the students identify as being the most pressing or most topical issues for their community. And so I just want to say, if any of them are interested in addressing any of those issues with us at any particular time, I'm happy to speak with them. We don't usually hear directly from students, honestly, so I'd be really happy to talk with them if that would be helpful at any time.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
We're inviting students back from the program this summer to present to us.
Do a report out. We would love that.
And we'll make sure that you all get the invitations, too, to the open, like, open house.
Absolutely.
Because, yeah, we would love to have.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have our Student Advisory Group that meets once a week throughout the school year. We do it each semester. We did have some trouble this year with the new diversity liaison. So we had a very small group, which was good, but we have so many hopes in the future. We had very passionate small groups, but now that we have our new diversity liaison up and running and going, we have so many ideas. We want to get into the community. We want to bring our advisory group possibly to a meeting or to speak to one of you at some point. So that's definitely in the works in our brains to get them more integrated in the community and the aspects of it.
How many students get to do this? Get to do the summer program?
So it is a 10-student cap right now. We haven't. No, that's okay. But we haven't had an overflow yet. Once we, if we ever hit that point, we might reassess how many people we have in the program.
We are working, and I was working with Maureen on this earlier today, where there will be an EHS staff member, likely Daniel Tate, who is our diversity liaison at East Hampton High School, will be participating in sort of supervising the kids and facilitating the programming. So that does give us a little bit more capacity if we needed to expand. But we're still kind of hammering at all the details of that.
So cool. Great. Anyone else have lots of questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Next up, we have public comment, which comes a bit late in the meeting this evening. Anybody not said their piece this evening that wants to get that microphone? And anybody online, you could raise your digital hand via Google Meet. We're going to leave that open for just a minute to give everybody a chance. Going once. And all right, we are going to close public comment for this evening and move on to the superintendent update.
Great, we have a couple of updates. The first one is an exciting program called the Bright Program. It's actually based in Brookline. This program, luckily that we have Julian Levin, that also does a lot of grant writing for the district, and she has applied for this program, and we did receive it. The Bright Program focuses on helping students that are having emotional challenges during the day, and it refocuses students so they can eventually get back into their classroom. We're starting it at the high school, because that's where the grant was available for. Our hope is that eventually we'll be able to drop it down also into Mountain View. And I asked Julian to come and just tell you a little bit more about it, and then if you do take a vote on it, we do have an MOU that we need to sign.
Perfect. So just to clarify, everybody, Julian is presenting. We have an MOU in the agenda packet, so we'll have an opportunity to vote if we have a motion tonight. Go ahead. Thank you, Julian, for joining us.
Oh, thank you for having me. I'm so humbled to share the stage with We The People and Safe Passage, but these are all the best people. Okay, so this is, this is just going to add to the amazing programming we have in East Hampton, is to introduce you to the Bright model. The Bright model is an intersection of what are the programming, the educational programming we already have, and then skill building for youth development and mental health support. And, okay, there we go. So this is a national model, which is how we were able to apply for grant funding. The important part about the Bright model is that it fits into the current model that we've been talking about for a few meetings, called the multi-tiered system of supports. So if you remember the multi-tiered system of supports, this is a full, whole-child model around our academic, our social-emotional, our behavioral supports for how students are developing in our educational system. This is a, the Bright model is a tier-three support, but I just want to say quickly that the tier-three is often referred to as a special education model. Bright is a general education tier-three support. And I think that what's important about that for us is that we have students that need intensive support, and sometimes because special education is the only option for intensive support, students are found eligible for that support, when we could be using a much more short-term, flexible model to provide that intervention. So that's what Bright is. Bright is a general education intensive tier-three support. Oops. There we go. So the way this looks is, this is specifically for students who are on extended mental health-related absences or any other kind of medical treatment or medical injury absence. So it could be a concussion, it could be something that is or is not documented in IEP. But any student who has an absence from school or school refusal for five or more days would be eligible for this program. And it's really a transition in and out of the regular school-day program. The Bright Room is one of the main aspects of the program, and so I'm excited to work with the grant program and the administrators and staff at EHS to design what this space could look like. I think it's a really exciting opportunity. I like space design. And then the support plan is the most important part, which is this four-pronged plan between the clinical support from the clinical coordinator that staffs the Bright Room, the academic support from the academic coordinator, the care coordination from the counseling services in the school, and then the family support, which like, makes it all come together into this really, like, gentle embrace of the whole family and school when they're experiencing this kind of absence from school. So this is it. This is the clinical coordinator, academic coordinator, counselors, and teachers, sort of all coming together to provide this embrace support, whole-child support for students who are experiencing absence from school for any number of reasons. And that is the summary of the Bright program. I'm going to stop sharing. So what's exciting about this is that we have an opportunity to fund this program through grant funding, and so what we're asking tonight is that you support the memorandum of agreement with the Bright program out of Brookline to implement this program at EHS next year. And as Superintendent said, this is exactly the right kind of programming that we'd also like to have at Mountain View. And so the hope is that we put this pilot program at EHS, and then we can expand in the future.
So to clarify, this is for one year, the MOA that we would be entertaining tonight?
It's actually two years. Thank you for asking that. It's a two-year MOA because the first year, it fully forms our staffing, but in the second year, it expects a commitment from the district in terms of funding. So what we're really looking at is easing this into our operating budget.
So what sort of commitment would they, in theory, be looking for? What would the minimum contribution be from the district in year two?
What I proposed was just less than a 50% commitment.
So what does that mean in numbers? Is that like the equivalent of a 1.0 FTE, or do we know, do we have?
It would be a .5 FTE teacher and .5 FTE paraeducator.
Okay. That would be our 50% contribution for year two?
Correct.
Okay. And then year, sorry to jump in, year three would go up to one? There is no year three. This is just a two-year MOA.
Correct.
Is the plan that we would try to incorporate this long-term?
Mm-hmm.
And take it over ourselves?
Yes.
And so that would be going to a 1-1, or be even more than, than two full FTEs?
No, it would, it's a 1.0 professional licensed staff member and a 1.0 paraeducator.
Okay, as it goes. Okay. If there are no more questions for Julian, we could entertain a motion and a second and open discussion. Are there any questions for Julian?
I just have a question about service delivery. So are these all services that are taking place within the school? Or, I'm sorry, you're in two different places, so I keep looking at your face. Are these?
Yeah, I mean, I also have two different faces of myself on the digital screen. It's really disorienting.
Yeah, so are there, so basically, are there like, are they receiving these supports from these four different categories, like, only in school, or are they receiving some of those at home as well?
So the clinical coordinator, the academic coordinator, and the teaching services are all in school.
Okay.
There could be coordination between outside services as well, depending on the student's need. But yes, like, the idea is that students may be coming in from hospitalization, and there needs to be transition planning. Oh, my gosh, I just became infinite.
I was trying to make it go away.
You're always infinite to me, Julian. Keep going.
I've always dreamt of being, okay, that was.
So this is, so just to back up for a second, so this is where, so you're saying, like, in the event that, like, a student is hospitalized, this would kick in after they return from that hospitalization? Who makes the referral? Like, is it somebody at the school district who refers them for the program?
We call it the SST. It's the Student Support Team.
Okay.
And that consists of the counselors, the administrators, and then this clinical coordinator for Bright would also be on that team.
Okay.
And so collectively, they're, they meet every week to look at students who, for whatever reason, are not quite, you know, on track.
Right. So these, so, can I ask another question?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So these students are like, I'm imagining, like, they're returning home from a psychiatric hospitalization. They have been cleared to return to school, essentially. This starts once they return to school. This is not like what they're receiving while they're in the hospital or anything.
Correct. That's right. This is the transition program back to school. And it really looks like, at the beginning, it may be that they start five minutes back in classes.
Right.
And then you're building stamina. So yeah, there's, mental health, hospitalization, absolutely, but it could also be someone who's coming back from a concussion.
Right.
Like, there are a lot of reasons students can't get to school.
And what do, what's our current approach in those situations without this program?
A lot of it falls on the counselors.
Okay.
Or a safety plan.
Safety plan.
Safety.
Yeah, like, a safety plan that involves usually our adjustment counselors, our administrators.
School adjustment. Do you have, go ahead. I have a question when you're done.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good for now.
Okay, jump in when you have more, you will. Julian, I'm curious, what do you foresee? Can you talk me through your vision of getting this to Mountain View? I think this is wonderful to bring to the high school. It's breaking my heart a little bit, but I think the need is arguably even greater down there. So I'm curious how you envision the timeline of being able to bring something like this to Mountain View?
Yeah, you are speaking the truth of all of us. So the reason that we are bringing this to EHS is because a couple of years ago, we saw the need at EHS, and so we had preliminarily made contact with the Bright program in Brookline and said, like, "We think this is a great match for East Hampton. Can we do this?" And at the time, we couldn't. So they reached back out and said, "We have this grant funding. We think your high school would be a great match." And so we applied, and they accepted us, and it's amazing. And so we applied, and they accepted us, and it's amazing. So what I would love to see is that when we go to that 50% model next year at the high school, we go into a pilot year at Mountain View. I think that all of us have said the Mountain View Middle School would be such an extraordinary place to be able to offer this kind of service. So I would love to see it move sort of faster in terms of going into next year, having Mountain View be a pilot year, after we see whether it's successful at EHS. I mean, we need to gather the data and make sure that this is the right model for our community, but I'm really optimistic about that, and I think that we can show you that this is something that students really need.
I'm going to ask you to stretch that a little bit further. What does that pilot program look like? Like one faculty, one para educator serving what, six through eight initially?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Can I just add, so it would be like a possible addition to the budget?
Yeah.
Next year. But still, right, some kids may never be able to come back from hospitalizations, and we look at alternative placements outside the district. So it's a very good investment to have the Bright, and they have a very long history, the Bright program, and they're very exact on what the interventions are. And some students may have to stay in the Bright Room, maybe for a month, right, until they're able to go out and be into, you know, maybe one or two classes. But the goal is always for them to have that support, wrap interventions around them, and then let them go back out to the regular curriculum. So somebody might have a, not even be identified, and for some reason, something happened, and they come in, they're extremely upset. And it can be used also for situational issues that arise also. But the biggest idea is that it's for tier three. So you know, tier one is the skills that all teachers have to learn to deal with kids. And then tier two might be our school adjustment counselor. Now tier three, it's a much more intensive program, but it's right there in your school, and not sending kids elsewhere to get those services.
That otherwise would be absent.
Well, it sounds like otherwise, it's either tier two, it's the counselors kind of doing the best they can, or they're going out of district, or they're not coming to school. Yeah, they're not going to school, so.
Any other questions for Julianne? Yes?
I've got some questions.
Yeah, 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 get it.
Okay, my first question is if there's urgency on the vote. Like, do we need to get approval of the MOA tonight? Or my, because I'm putting my finance subcommittee hat on and thinking, I would love to see and talk to Nick about this, and the director of business services' take on it.
So we've already, before we initiated this, we already included the director of business services, and he's okay with the signing of it now, and we'll have to see, you know, where the funding will come, but it's really only two people, and during the course of time, people come and go for different reasons. So he was okay assigning it at this point, because it's only talking about two people for not next year, but the year after.
We had dog year, additional tier two and three supports too.
And we're saying, if we agree to this, we're saying that next year, it's funded by the grant.
In year one, it's.
And year two, we would have to supplement 50%, but if that's something that was not feasible, we're not, you're not tied into it per se, it's not gonna, I mean, we'd hate to see this fizzle out, but, because in my thinking is that, yes, when these kids come back from these types of scenarios, and they're in the classroom, and an adjustment counselor checks in on them, and then goes off to the other groups of kids all over the building, and the classroom teacher is trying to juggle the whole entire group, that can get lost in the shuffle, where it seems like this program is very communicative with the home environment also, and kind of getting into the root of what's going on, how can we support you, and giving the families this support that they can maybe hold on to and say, oh, and maybe have a much broader effect than just the classroom teachers and adjustments counselors just trying to keep things even keel. So, I mean, I'd be, I can't see not voting for it, but I just wanted to make sure, you know, we're voting for this two-year process with hopes that we can fund it, but at least get it on the ground running for year one, being funded by the grant. Is that accurate?
So to clarify, if we can't afford year two, we would just junk the whole thing?
That's right.
Okay.
So just clarifying, first, I guess maybe backing up, first of all, this is incredibly important, and I'm 100% like, we need to be doing this, I need to see it at Mountain View, like, this is where we need to be spending our money. I'm only putting on the finance hat because we are in the midst of all sorts of stuff. And I took on that responsibility when I became chair of that subcommittee. So just to make sure I understand, is there urgent, like, do we need to vote tonight, or this doesn't happen? Or, I just want to make sure that we.
Right, our next, our next meeting is in a week. Is that right? I see a meeting, this says 5/28. I thought it was June 11. We are either meeting May 28th or June 11. So I would be interested to hear what happens if we don't approve this until June 11.
Julianne, I, Lucia, I believe that there was a deadline on us signing this, that kind of already came and went. And we just asked, told them that, you know, we really, we didn't have a school committee meeting scheduled, and that we were gonna submit it after this meeting.
So yes.
The deadline is yes.
But the financial thought is fair, and I think if we're aware.
I think that's helpful, just to know.
That we're not signed up for something that we have to now, yeah, find the money for, if we can't. We'd love to find the money for it.
And just so, you know, I think it's good that we get that all on the public record, so that folks who are watching this may be thinking about, like, well, what about this going out and negotiating? Like, we're not committing to something, you know, we're not overextending ourselves, but we do need to vote on this tonight. That makes sense to me, I think.
And there are, it costs nothing, and it does have the potential to save us some money, too, which is actually worth, and so that was another question I had is, and I don't know if this is a question, again, I don't know which way I'm looking, for you, Julianne, or for somebody else, is there like, what's the data collection look like in that first year, or that first two years even? How do we know when it's working or what it's doing?
Year one for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's actually part of what the grant pays for, is the Bright program, which is the national program, collects the data on student entrance and exit criteria, how many days students spend in Bright, what it looks like to transition them back into the general education classrooms. So it's, that's what, that's kind of what we're getting as their oversight, is that they want to do the data collection, honestly, because they want to prove their models working on a national level, so that they continue to spread the model. But yeah, so we will absolutely be getting a ton of data in terms of whether it's working or not.
So we got a free program and free data collection?
Yes, because I'm even looking at their website right now, they have data on effectiveness.
Correct. Yeah, so for year one, that's, that's what, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead, Julianne, finish your thought, and then the mayor's question.
Oh, yeah, so that's what they're looking for, is they're looking for an effective model, effective interventions, that they're collecting data on, but then they want to say, like, after the first year, you know, we provided this support, they provide multi-tiered system support mapping, professional development, that's what comes with it for the first year. And then what they want is for us to take on the staffing.
Fair.
Yeah, so, one, data collection, the agreement, does it actually allow us to get our raw data? And does it allow us the raw data as it connects to the school's KPIs?
Yep.
Will this program fill the gap around the new attendance regulations?
Julianne, a question for you, because I don't have the answer.
So the first part around, so, sorry, the first part was, it seems like it was around maybe information sharing.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so we did have Russ, our, the school district attorney, look at the MOA, and so I'm confident that we get our raw data, and then we share disaggregated data that's confidential with the Bright program.
Excellent. And then, and then the KPIs, the key performance indicators, my question is, do they align to our district plan? And do they align to mass standards? And I'll kind of caveat that, or the question is, one, I want to know. Two, when we talked about different interventions and budget, it was tier two was a target, not tier three? And so looking for a little teasing, and I am one to sign on to a grant, I mean, I'm not, I, yeah, I'm just wondering the connection, or the thought, or the hope around the opportunity for a tier three.
Yeah, that's such a great question, because I have been talking nonstop about tier two, and so it does, it does beg the question, why am I here talking about tier three? So what I am hoping with this program is, so we don't have any general education tier three, and I think that in my understanding of the multi-tiered system of supports, like, I've come a long way in understanding that tier three doesn't mean special education. And so I think that there are these tier three supports for general education students that I'm just learning about. And in learning about the Bright program, I'm like, oh, I wonder if this is what we were hoping for tier two, but we were calling it tier two because we were talking about students who aren't on IEPs or 504s. And so that, that's, I think, you know, learning that we're all doing right now around implementing the multi-tiered system of supports, and I think we're in year one, really, of doing that. And I guess I'm curious to see what implementing this program does for our tier two numbers when we're able to build stamina. And I think that that's a, I want to just emphasize that as the point of the program is this, like, it takes stamina to go to school every day and sit in 84-minute classes, or to be here at the school committee meeting, like, the stamina that you are exhibiting right now, all of you, is really important, and it's a skill that you have, and it's a skill that when you maybe don't do school, or don't do your job for some period of time because there's some disruption in your life, that you really need support in rebuilding. So I'm not sure I would have called this tier three.
My last, my last question, and then a suggestion, or, so with the Bright Room and how it interacts with the curriculum and that tier support, are there very specific guidelines of time in the Bright Room, how that correlates to our time in learning, our time out of class, disciplinary? I am very interested. I am concerned, though, there could be kids who are using this appropriately for less than a medical emergency, that don't have a 504, an IEP, that will, you can do a plan around, that they're going to be penalized.
Great point.
Yeah, it really is. And that's, so the Amherst Regional School has a Bright program, and when we went to visit their program, I went with Antigone Lively, the director of special ed, and Bill Evans, the principal of the high school, and that was our number one question, was, you know, in the past, we've had alternative spaces for students, and they don't do this skill building, the stamina building, or the therapeutic interventions, or the wraparound care of involving the family and the, you know, potentially the hospital. And we were wondering, like, how do you do that? And the truth is that, yes, Bright provides as part of their model consultation around entrance and exit criteria, and really, like, if you don't meet those criteria, that, you know, that's a conversation for the SST. It's not, it doesn't mean that you get to stay in the Bright Room. So I think that what's great about this program is that we're not just relying on, like, we're going to know who needs to be here and who doesn't. What we're saying is, we're signing on to a nationally recognized program that's used entrance-exit criteria in a way that has been, you know, research proven, and so we're not just making this up, we're not just saying that this kid gets to go in and this kid doesn't. We're saying that this is the program.
Can I just add too, is that we do have kids at the high school that do need tier three interventions, but we don't have them. So, you know, I can think of four or five students that would really, would have profited if we had had this program. So instead, they get, you know, intensive time with counselors, school adjustment counselors, which then, that the other kids that might just need tier two interventions don't get to see, because we're tying everybody up, because we want to make sure that those students are all right. This would allow those students to get the interventions they need, and then the school adjustment counselors, and guidance counselors, and the staff would be able to more effectively deal with the kids that are need tier two interventions. So in the end, it's a much more effective intervention plan. And then also, also, we're still going to do training for all staff on tier one, and that still needs to happen, so that everybody gets the interventions they need at their level with the staff that we currently have. So this is an opportunity for those kids that, you know, really do need that intervention that we're not providing as intensive as we should, because we just don't have the staff, and they need that level three, and we don't want them to be, go out of district placements. So I think it's a great opportunity, again, you know, we would have chosen, we tried to talk to the people and say, no, no, we want it for the middle school, right, just let us do a pilot at the middle school, but it was clear that they are funding source at high school, so we're starting there, and we'll build a good program there, and then once that's built, move it down to the middle school.
I think it seems very valuable to staff also, only in that, we are always adopting, especially SEL programs, and the classroom teachers get dealt the hand of, learn this, teach this, but also teach literacy, teach math, but also teach this, and it can sometimes feel like you're just trying to stay afloat. So I think by adding a support system to the building where general ed staff, special ed staff know, oh, this is to help me too, because now this student is going to get the support that they need, but I will be involved, but I'm not going to be having the burden of adding all this extra onto my plate. So I think that's what sounds really intriguing for the staff, to think about the teachers to go, hey, we have something for the kids, but really, it's also for you.
Good point. Anyone else? Ben, Megan?
I feel like I've heard enough, like, I feel pretty satisfied. I worry a little bit about that second year, but.
Don't yet.
Can I just, one more, so it's for general ed, is it exclusive to general ed? I mean, if you have a kid on a 504, who's, and, okay, so it's just.
No, it's just like regardless of special ed.
Wherever you're at.
You don't need.
Wherever you're at.
Got it. Good, good.
Sam?
I was, I was going to do a motion if you want one.
Any other questions?
I've heard enough.
They've heard enough, Julianne, is what I'm hearing. Entertain a motion?
I, so, you can correct me on the wording, but I'm going to say I move to approve the MOU between.
MOU?
MOU, between East Hampton Public Schools and the Brookline Center for the Bright program.
Thank you, Sam. Linda was our second. Do we have any discussion? I had a question.
I have some ideas for the room, but we can talk later.
Yeah, I don't, I think it was an invaluable, important. Any other discussion or questions before we take a vote? Okay, we're going to roll call vote. Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Eric?
Eric, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Linda?
Linda Markey, aye.
Sam?
Sam Hunter, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChala, aye.
Laura Scott, aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Julianne, for your time.
Thanks, Julianne.
Oh, I remember what I was going to ask. Is it possible, in this year one idea, where you, and maybe we discuss this at a later date, but can we kind of start that integration and familiarity with maybe the Mountain View school adjustment counselors and guidance counselors, maybe bring, start, like, mid-year, year one, just kind of start that introduction and conversation and how you, like, what was your timeline, thinking about how to, when to start that drawdown?
No, that's, I'm sorry, my dog. I think. I think that's a great idea. I, I think, you know, we're always looking for opportunities for folks from Mountain View to come and be at EHS and folks from EHS to go and be at Mountain View. So I think coming and observing the room, super excited to hear what Sam has in mind for the room because we, we have to do that. I'm so sorry. As a Beagle. Yeah. Yes, no decorating, but also I think, you know, we're, we're thinking about what are, you know, the refrigerator, the microwave, like, what do you need in a room like that? But I do think that having the, the Mountain View folks come and observe in the room, like, that's what we got to do going to the Amherst program. And I will say, like, I was a little bit like, I don't know what this is going to look like. And then I went to the Amherst program and I was like, well, now I know exactly what it's supposed to look like. So I feel like the Mountain View folks will have that as well when, when they experience this programming. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to have that start up right away in, in Year One, the observation. And, and really then the transition of students between eighth grade and ninth grade who may, you know, need to access that kind of programming, so.
Any other thoughts on this topic?
I applaud public education. When I was in high school, the only opportunity made available to us was a smoking lounge. So.
It's just, I think this is exactly what parents in our community have been asking for. And just, again, yes, yeah, no.
A smoking lounge?
Support for.
Don't smoke.
Our students are, are dealing with a lot right now. And this is exactly what parents have been writing to us and telling us that they are asking for, for their kids. So thank you for finding this grant. And my questions were not at all that, I didn't want this there, it was just, I was being right.
You gotta.
Nick is going to be so happy that you asked, Megan. I'm going to make sure that he knows that you wanted to know on his behalf, yeah.
I just wanted to make him proud. This is really great.
That I feel that our education model has been dealt with something that's pretty old. And that I have been very questioning how we are going to start moving forward. And this looks like a start moving forward step for me.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
Well said. Thank you, Julian.
Thank you, Julian.
Okay, we are going to move on to our business update, which is going to look and feel weird for all of us tonight because Nick Bernier is at a conference.
Whoa.
Missed you, Mr. Bernier.
We let him out of this building?
I know. He's been allowed to leave.
Temporarily. So Megan, do you feel comfortable maybe giving us a, a brief summary of our finance and personnel updates?
Gosh.
Or, or Maureen, anybody but me, anybody but me like to try to translate this for the public?
Sure.
Sure. I might let Maureen do it.
All right, great. I have them right here.
Perfect. Okay, so this is Nick's report for the local appropriation report. So at this time, eighty-seven point thirty-six percent of the appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered. So nonessential purchasing has been closed for the year. So all schools were notified that purchasing was closed so that we can start to work on the end of year report. Still, we do have areas of concern, which probably everybody has. Is, for example, the utility bills are, are still an issue of concern for us. The out-of-district tuition, and again, special ed transportation. So he started reclassifying some of the special ed tuition expenses. We did apply for the circuit breaker and.
Extraordinary relief?
Extraordinary, yes. And so both of those. So we'll be finding out the extraordinary relief payments. We'll be finding out more about those. And we won't know that until we get closer to the year-end close.
End of June, you think?
The, probably in June. The circuit breaker extraordinary relief amounts were posted last week. And East Hampton Public Schools is eligible for both categories of relief. So the total amount we're receiving is a great total of six hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-eight. So this total, three hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-three, has to be spent by this June thirtieth. So some of that will be, will be used for.
We were already.
Because we already know we're going to be in a deficit. So some of that will be used for that. The remainder can be carried forward for one year. This is extremely helpful, again, for closing the deficit for the end of this year. The goal, though, is to carry forward as much as possible to help next year's special ed expenses because they never really go down. They continue to go up. The exact amount that'll be carried over will be determined during the year-end close. And at that point, we'll share it with the school committee. Our summer food service program.
Yep.
This summer, we'll be continuing to run our summer food service program for all interested families. This year, the program will run out of Mountain View School and out of the Nary School. Meals will be available five days per week and must be consumed on the site. That's the rule on that. We received a grant in the amount of one thousand five hundred from Project Bread to help us run the program. And we'll give more information at the next meeting. And the personnel report now. Is everybody all set with the, that part of the report?
Questions on the finance?
Thank you, Maureen.
No questions? Okay, personnel. We hired four new substitutes. And most of them were hired during the month of April. And we also hired a one-parent educator from Mountain View. We have a speech-language pathologist who decided not to return from maternity leave. And we had a parent educator who also resigned. So we still have some vacancies. We're not going to fill some of these this year, of course. We have the middle school librarian, which we have found a middle school librarian. We're waiting for certification on license from the state. Again, that will not start till the next school year. Parent educator from Mountain View. We're looking for a lunch supervisor at Mountain View. There's only twenty-five days left, so things seem to be going okay. So it won't be hard, won't be looking for that person for this year. Night custodian for Mountain View. Speech-language pathologist for Mountain View. And then we did advertise for a network technician for the district. As of Friday, we also, Eva Lees here, who does all our data for the district, has resigned as of the twenty-fourth. So we are going to be advertising for that position because all your state and federal reporting is due. And it's really a key time not to have a person in that area. So we did advertise for that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Julian. You did, Nick. Beautiful justice. Any other questions on finance or personnel? And then we are going to move on to the school committee discussion. A policy subcommittee update, Sam?
Yeah, so there's, there's been a lot of activity in policy subcommittee. We had a, a meeting on Friday, which I refer to as Policy Palooza, which was, we met for three hours. We went through, MASC has basically put out, up, they put out updates in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two to a number of their policies. It's not, there's nothing that East Hampton has done wrong. It's just that there were a lot of updates kind of released at the same time. And then, I don't know if you guys have been paying attention, but a lot has happened since twenty twenty-two in our district in particular. So I've just been going, I've been going through kind of every policy and sort of seeing what needs to be changed and then kind of bringing it to policy. So we went through, I think we did about sixty of them we got through, which was good. So what I'm going to do now is, I've got a whole bunch to organize and I'm going to sort of prioritize them and try to sort of put them together. And then I'm going to be bringing them forward to the regular committee to, to vote on. And I'm going to be preparing like a presentation for those just so that the public has a better understanding of what we're actually talking about. Some of them are like really simple changes. It's honestly just like changing his and her to their in a, in a thing. And then some of them are more significant changes or there's new, new policies that we just didn't have in the books. So, so it's all been great fun. And I mean that sincerely. I really, I really enjoy this kind of work. So I will be working on that more over the summer. And thank you.
And the number, that deficit, that was around a hundred policies?
There were about, like, there are still a number that we haven't gotten to yet. But there were about like a hundred-ish that needed to be updated or needed to be added. And then there's, you know, I mean, and this is just, these are just the policies that MASC like has written and recommend that we have. So there may be other things. And some, to some of them, we do want to make more specific changes to that are more specific to our community. There's one in particular that came up was the anti-idling policy, which was passed in twenty eleven in East Hampton. MASC has finally come up with their own anti-idling policy in twenty twenty-two that they would like for us to make sure we include the same language. But we were probably the, we might have been the first community in the state to have one. This was like a really, really big deal. As anybody who lived in East Hampton at the time can remember, this was a huge community effort to get that anti-idling policy in place. So I would really like to hear from anybody who was involved in that.
Judith Dyer.
Yes. I, I have heard that name a couple of times. So I would just love to make sure that, like, we're not just, I don't want to just, like, replace the old policy with the new policy. I want to kind of add, and I know Paula Garcia was really involved in that effort. I'd really like to, I would really like to include her name in it maybe or include some kind of, I, I don't know, I might be the only person who likes to do memorials through policy, but like. It's a cool thing that we did and that we were known for. And so I would like to keep some of that old language in there and kind of that spirit, that community spirit. So anybody from the community who's interested in that one in particular or wants to give me some history, I'm very interested in that.
Try Meredith Belice, she might be able to put you in with Judith Dyer.
Okay, cool.
And who could?
Sounds good.
Any other questions about the policy update? Finance, Megan?
I don't have any updates.
Isn't that lovely? Excellent.
Yeah.
I don't believe we have a CES update, do we, Sam? You have not?
No, there is a CES meeting in, in two weeks or one week. I guess this is, it is one week from this week. So it's one week.
And Megan, would you like to spearhead the?
Oh, my gosh.
American eels update, everybody?
I'm so excited. We have heard back. We did receive this grant to bring American eels into our classroom. My eternal thanks for Brian Stokowski, who did all of this work. Saying something about like I did any part of it, it was all Brian. So, so we have the grant. I believe it's going to start for next year. He has reached out. We're going to set up a meeting with finance and with our Director of Business Services and start getting some tanks and some eels in Mountain View.
Eels are happening.
Eels are happening.
Apparently, they're an integral part of our biome, everybody, so, welcome.
So are we getting, do we know if it's like one eel per classroom or?
You don't know.
We, so this, you might be surprised to learn, I was surprised to learn, that American eels are incredibly popular. So our hope originally was, maybe we can apply for this grant and we'll get one eel in every classroom. That might not happen. We might be talking more about some representative classrooms with the American eel. And so, you know, how that exactly will get dispersed, in which grades and in which particular classrooms?
Do you think there's a shortage of eels?
I think there's a shortage of money.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing you didn't run on an eel in every class.
But I am sure that Brian and his colleagues would be thrilled to build this program to the point where we have an eel in every classroom.
I can tell you, Brian lives nearby. My daughter and his daughter are friends. He works at Fish and Wildlife. He works on fish passage particularly, which is removing, repairing dams, making the fish passage available, all about the ecosystem, how the fish and the eels are a part of the ecosystem. They're, they're very passionate about it. And I think it would really be a, listening to the We the People, I think it would be a really cool, all I kept thinking for the We the People was, can we get some type of a civic program in the middle school? To get kids that's.
Program, we'll talk about it.
Yes, to get kids that's fired up. But this would be a starting point of just, hey. Yeah.
Okay.
Someone from our community.
Someone in our community who works with governments all over New England on trying to figure out how can we best serve the, the rivers and the, the wildlife in the rivers. And I'm sure that would spark interest in other kids that might go, okay. And who knows, maybe something down the line of kids even presenting something at a small level or in Boston or just the things that they learned. We can get big, but I think that this is a really, really cool starting point.
My son's excited too.
American eels.
It's going to be great.
They're coming.
They're coming.
We're known for so many things.
I'm really excited.
I think it's going to be great.
It's what I love about this town.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, thank you, Brian.
He really took the initiative. Hats off, really incredible. Okay, moving on to action items. Megan, do you want, you, you don't need this, you have that.
I got this. Yes, okay. Motion to approve the school payroll dated four eighteen twenty twenty-four in the amount of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated four eighteen twenty twenty-four in the amount of six hundred and ninety-three thousand and four hundred dollars and no cents.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated five two twenty twenty-four in the amount of five hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I, I think this is when We the People were saying that they were like loving.
Oh, yeah.
The heartbeat of America.
It's definitely the warrants. Definitely the warrants.
This is what sealed the deal when they won.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated five two twenty twenty-four in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the school committee work session minutes of March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And note that those are in your packet.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Sam. All those in, any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the public hearing fiscal year twenty-five budget and regular session minutes of March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four with a stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved, viewed, and released by the chair. And again, those minutes are in the packet.
Can I get a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Motion to approve the regular session minutes of April ninth, twenty twenty-four with a stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved, reviewed, and released by the chair. In your packet.
Yes. A second?
Oh, second, sorry.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
And another fun one, motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for East Hampton High School to Manchester, Connecticut on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That was yesterday. I already approved this. Yes, I mean, let's approve it again, just in case they changed something maybe and that was why.
Still cool?